Welcome to One Voice at a Time. It is election season 2017 in Londonderry and we are having the candidates for town council on our show so that they can tell you why they want to run for town council, what kinds of things they want to do for the community. And this time, we'll be talking to Joe Green. And Joe is an incumbent town councillor and he has decided to run again. And Joe, tell us about yourself. How long have you been in Londonderry?
Been in Londonderry, yeah, 23 years right now.
Twenty-three, okay.
Yeah, we moved up here from actually the Boston area. And we moved up here, like a lot of everybody else, kind of moved up here because of the beautiful aesthetics, the apple orchards, and just the community, the schools, the community, the services.
Plus now you're in New Hampshire, not Massachusetts.
Absolutely.
And what kinds of things have you done here in Londonderry since you got here?
Well, I believe in volunteerism, so I really think that in order to be part of a community, you really have to get involved. So I first got involved with coaching my children when they were really young. We went through with my son, baseball, and basketball, and soccer, and with my daughter...
That sounds like a Londonderry parent.
Yeah, we went through basketball with my daughter and soccer. Actually, really proud of them, they did really, really well. I was able to coach them, I ran coordinated leagues, and I became vice president of baseball and vice president of soccer.
Terrific.
Currently, vice president of soccer, by the way I say it right now.
Okay, terrific. And have you volunteered in any other way?
Yeah, so, you know, lots of times in the recreational end of it, but certainly in governmental time, I actually served on the budget committee as well as the zoning board of adjustments. And of course, for the past six years, as your town councillor.
Mm-hmm, yes, you have.
Very proud of that.
Absolutely.
And it's been a great, it's been a very, very rewarding situation and a very rewarding experience for me as well.
Good, that's great to hear. Must have been, because you're going to do it again.
Yep.
You got your name out there to do another three years.
Absolutely.
So, what exactly made you decide to do another three years? Are there things that you have on your agenda that you think need to be addressed?
Yeah, I think, I think right now that, you know, we've done a lot together as a group, and the continuity is very, very important. I know Tom can't continue if he wants to retire.
That's Tom Frida, yes.
Tom Frida, I know. I know, we mention names like as if everybody else knows, right?
That's okay, I'll just fill in the blanks if I can.
Thank you, thank you. So, you know, it was very sad to see Tom go. What, you know, a great councillor and had a lot of, a lot of work that he did financially with us, really jumping into the numbers. He was kind of the CPA of the group. But, you know, the thing was, is that people seldom say to me, "Why is, you know, why is it that you guys always vote the same way?" And it really, you've got to pay attention, because we really don't. If you think about the communication, the conversations that we have out there in TV land, we really vet the issues. And more recently, we've had some pretty lengthy discussions about some things. And really, I think that the fact that we're heading in the same direction, that we have the same vision, helps us in that. And so, really, I think that we're at a pretty volatile time right now, and we really, I really think that the continuity that we've, in the group that we've gotten together and created, and the vision that we share is very, very important for the continued success of Londonderry.
So you think that will be productive to keep that group together as much as possible?
Right, right. Yeah, and I think that, you know, I think that the fact that, just the fact that, you know, we've been able to do things that were kind of never been done before, or at least for many, many years, as a councillor together, shows that if you have the same vision, you know, if you disagree, it's great, you know, because you can communicate and you can end up, you know, agreeing what to do at the end.
And you're all comfortable doing that, disagreeing with each other.
That vetting process, yeah, that vetting process is very important.
So you get to that place of agreement, you just don't start there?
Right.
Okay.
Of course not.
All right, well, no, that sounds good. I think if you always started there, then that would be...
That'd be a very big problem, right?
Yeah, that could be a problem.
Yeah.
What, do you want to talk about any of the things that you feel you've accomplished so far?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think we've done quite a bit in the past six years. You know, one of the things that I'm most proud of is that I fought very hard to keep taxes low. And this is a confusing part for many people, because as I go around talking to the constituents, they say to me, "Well, what do you mean? My tax rate's going up." And so, I have to explain to them that really, really, since 2007, we really haven't had taxes go down at the town side three years in a row. So, and that's, we've accomplished that.
So they have gone down three years in a row.
They've gone down. If you look at your tax bill, and I know it comes out in one bill, but it actually has a town and school side.
Break it up, yeah, yeah.
And so, I want people to understand that, because it was a promise, and I did keep that promise, and the council kept the promise. Because what we're trying to do is we're trying to bring more services with less expense to the taxpayer. And that has been, you know, you could look six years back, and that was one of the promises I made, and I felt, I feel really good about keeping that promise. The other thing I wanted to mention was that, you know, we said, "How are we going to have more services? There's more demands, how are we going to produce that and keep the tax rate down?"
Right.
So the thought process was to work in the north side of town and really engage businesses and engage the new town manager, which was part of the hiring process of Kevin, great, great guy.
Kevin Smith, yeah.
Who, Kevin Smith, who actually has taken our direction and really ran with it in the Pettingill Road area. You know, and we did that without a TIF that, you know, was bonded that was going to come off the taxpayer.
And what's a TIF?
A TIF is something that, yeah, a TIF is something that basically, you can, there's a couple of things that you can do. You could actually create a TIF where it's a bond, and the TIF basically takes the tax revenue that, once the person actually starts paying taxes, that moves up there.
Their business, yeah.
And the business that comes in, and they start paying into a TIF, and that could go to pay a bond, right?
And that's what tax, what is that, TIA, Tax Incremental Fund or something like that?
Funding, yes, funding. So, it's, so what we did there is we actually created a TIF not for a bond, but we created a TIF because we felt like, Yanos was always saying, Yanos is, you know...
Our public works director.
We talked about that earlier, about people not knowing he's a public director, public works director. And he said, I have a little quote written down, "If you build it, they will come." And he said that, and it really rang true to me.
Oh, I think somebody else said that first.
Yeah, well, I know that, but at least he was the famous one quoting it in Londonderry. And I started to think about, you know, does that make sense? Let's take a look at it. And so, we ended up, again, having that vision, and common vision, to say, "How can we do this without hurting the tax rate?" So, we put it on the landowners, we put it on the developers, and we got it done over there. I mean, there are, you know, Milton Katz...
And you did not put it on residents.
We didn't put it on the residents.
Right.
You know, what we did is, when we created that, let me just jump back to the TIF real quick.
Yep.
What the TIF was, really was to do, was to pay for an element of things that, when Milton Katz and FedEx and FW Web, they all came up there and we started negotiating with them, they're like, "Well, you know, we don't mind paying for the street front, but we don't want to pay for something that's common." So we said, "How can we do this and have them all kind of contribute?" And so, we did open up a TIF, so that those tax, the tax revenue from the valuation, by the way, $100 million of new valuation up there since we opened up Pettingill. But, how that taxation would then pay for things that are common, like, one of the things was the traffic light. So, and once we paid for the traffic light, which was a common use thing, from their taxation, we closed it. So we're not interested in, like, you know, filling other coffers. We want to give back to the taxpayer. We want to give, that tax revenue that's coming in to be able to lower the taxes, and that's really what happened. That's the kind of secret sauce, really, up there. And we, and we feel that there's even further growth that can happen in that area. Again, and I'm definitely not a person that's going to sit there and put it on the taxpayer and throw bonds after bonds that's going to take money out of the pockets of them. But I think it's worked. I mean, we've seen it's worked. You know, Londonderry's bucking the trend in the economy and in the population growth in the state. You know, it's because we're focusing on that market demand, you know. You know, I think sometimes people say, "Oh, you know, workforce housing, all this other stuff," you know, and so, you know, I understand those concerns, and I hear them. And that's why we've mentioned a little bit about growth management options that we have, growth management plan, we've had that in the past.
But we have to hit a trigger to the growth management.
Right, there's certain triggers, right. And so, you know, and the thing is that there's zone regulations that we can put in place. So, we are talking about it, but I think that the town, the way we are with the council that we have, we're pretty agile enough to react to those things.
Okay. But you will welcome a new person on the board, right?
Of course, of course.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah, there's quite, there's quite a lot of difference, difference between all the candidates, I wish them all well.
I think everybody has a different focus.
They all bring something to the table, absolutely.
Different, yeah, different experiences. So, what are your thoughts as far as, you had mentioned, Yanos, as far as infrastructure in the community, what, I mean, how do you think we're doing?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the infrastructure in the community, really, there's two things that we've got to be mindful about. You know, we've got to keep our young and our seniors in town. And I think that the...
I'm not going anywhere.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you. And I think that, you know, that's vital, really, to our future prosperity, and I think that the way to do that is to really to listen. And I think sometimes we get so busy with our lives, we don't really listen to the people that are out there. And I, I think, my wife said to me, "You know, I don't want to go to Market Basket with you anymore." I said, "Why, honey?"
Too much listening.
She goes, "Because it takes you three and a half hours to go through the grocery store."
I think I've run into you a couple of times in Market Basket, yeah.
But it's good, because you get to talk to people in their regular environment and their com- they're not in front of lights and they're not...
I found, I found the same thing when I was doing politics, is that it took so long to shop.
But I love it.
That I always got the frozen food last, always.
And it was probably defrosted.
Still.
But think about this for a second, do you think that, you know, the point is, is that they're in a situation where they can feel comfortable talking to you, and it's great. I get, you know, if I sit there up on, up on the council, and I just go off of what I think, instead of trying to reach out and find out what people, I'm not going to be able to make the right decisions, at least the decisions that my constituents want. So that's why I reach out, that's why I do my homework.
And I've made the point that that's why we started the show, The One Voice at a Time, because people don't always get a chance to say their whole opinion, or they're all present all of their information, because there's not enough time, okay?
Well, thank you for that.
So they come on here, and they can do that if they want to, but it's, it's, the listening is important. I totally agree with you, that communication.
And so, I think people kind of saw that out there with the senior transportation situation, you know.
Yep.
And I don't blame any of the other councils, those guys are great, and they're all, they all have, they're very focused on their individual, but I'm the liaison of the senior affairs. And so, the thing is that, you know, what I wanted to try to do is I wanted to try to listen to what their needs were. And really, a lot of the seniors in town, they suffer in silence, they don't want to complain.
Yeah.
You know, so we really have to, I guess my point was, trying to get back to what I was...
We want to, we're just not sure anybody will listen.
Well, I'm listening.
Okay.
And I think, I think that's clear, I think when, when the people that got up at the deliberative session and they talked about these real-life situations, I heard, I listened. And I tried to relay that to the councils. And you know, the fact of the matter is, is that, no, it's not going to be paid for $35,000, it's not going to be paid for $5,000. There's no real understanding about what it's going to cost us, but it gets our foot in the door.
Yes.
It gets it started, and that's what we need to do, we need to get started, because although, you know, other transportation systems, CART is doing a certain service for us, they're not getting it all done. So anyway, without going down that road again, the reason why I got into that, the reason why I was screaming and hollering and making sure that I drove my point, is because I wanted to stand up for the people that weren't able to stand up for themselves. And I think the same thing with the young kids, you know, look at, they want, you know, the young and the seniors, they want an affordable place to live, they want a variety of places that they can shop, a variety of places of services, you know, and they also want a nice place that they can kind of recreate with people of their own age or own, you know, you know, whatever it is, like, you know, whatever projects they're looking for.
Yeah, you're right, the younger kids need that too.
And so, you know, and I have younger kids, you know, my son's 21, and my, and my daughter's 18, and they say, "You know, Dad, why can't we have a place that we can actually, like, just kind of, it's walkable? I can, I can go to the store, I can go up to my house, I can go to, you know, the pond." That's what they want, you know, and that, we see a lot of that in Woodmont, we kind of see that vision, you know.
Yeah, that walkable area.
And really, the master plan that we did for, you know, recently, that 10-year plan that I was a part of, I was on the commission there, you know, that really spoke to that.
Yes.
It really was clear about where we needed to go. And so, I really tried very hard to kind of stay on that path and stay in the vision.
How do we keep on track with the master plan?
Well, first of all, you've got to know it, and then secondly, you've got to read it.
Right.
And so, I had the ability, I didn't have to really read it at all, because I was part of it.
You did it, right.
So we went through it. But you've got to understand it, so you've got to understand the fact that, you know, we do have a changing, you know, environment, not only from a natural standpoint, but also from the people that actually live and work in our town.
The population, yeah.
So as that changes, and as that continues to grow and evolve, we have to change with it. But, doesn't mean that we have to get rid of the beautiful aesthetics, we have to get rid of all the apple orchards, and we have to get rid of the farms. We can still maintain those things that we really enjoy.
The treasure.
But also recognize that there's some services and some places that we can actually create a new Londonderry for the, for the future, you know.
So the master plan is pretty big, and it's fairly complicated.
Yep.
And I know, I'm hoping it doesn't happen with this one, but I know that in the past, master plans have sort of gotten put on a shelf and gathered dust. And for one thing, they cost money, that should not happen. For another thing, a lot of people put input into it, not just the people who worked on the committee, but also the people who gave input at different opportunities to do that. How do you keep your finger on that and make sure that it doesn't start gathering dust?
Well, I think...
Is there like a...
Yeah, I think what we did...
...measured plan for implementing what's in there?
Well, what we did is, we actually asked the planning board, and they've actually authorized master plans, it was, Master Plan Steering Committee was actually formed, like I said, I was on that. And then what we did is Implementation Committee, and they're meeting on a monthly basis now. And originally, the town was kind of backing away a little bit of that, but I spoke very, pretty strongly with Kevin and asked that we continue to insert ourselves in that process. And what that means to the town and to the master plan is that we, we're going to continue to take a look at the master plan, read it, work it out, and try to implement those pieces.
Okay.
And so, we have people that are from, you know, the school, we have people that are from the town, we have people that are from different walks of life.
A good mix.
At large, there's a good mix of people there from the planning board, from the, so there's all the boards kind of get together.
Okay.
And really try to say, "How can we make this live?" Because you're right, it's just going to create dust up on the shelf.
I know it has in the past, not this one, but others, so that's good.
Yep.
Okay, good to hear that that's happening. What other things are you looking at now, or are you hearing from your constituency that they are concerned about, or happy about, want to address, whatever?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot that's on the ballot this year. You know, there's four contracts with, in the town right now, and that we've negotiated with the unions, and each one of them have a price tag. You know, and the fact of the matter is, is the inaction, I want people to understand that the cost of inaction, at this point, would have cost us more in the long run.
Right.
So it's almost the inaction would have cost us more than the insurance.
True of almost everything.
Right, right. And so, when you look at the type of insurance that is coming down the road, we had to try to figure out, how can we, because if you remember, we haven't had contracts in a while.
Yeah, it has been a while, yeah.
And that means that they didn't get raises, and all these deserved things that they should have gotten. So when they came to the table, when you come to a table in negotiation, not everybody's going to leave with 100% perfect scenario.
No, that's why it's a negotiation.
Right. And so, but this year, because we were staunchly definitive about what we wanted to do, and that was protect the taxpayer, and protect, as much as we wanted to make sure that we rewarded the great services of the Fight Department, the Police Department, Public Works, we also had to make sure as, as town councillors that we balanced that with the tax rate. So, we said, "Look, when you're ready to come to the table, and you're ready to actually negotiate, and as long as it's not going to be a one-sided conversation, we'll talk."
Okay.
So for a lot of, a lot of time, it was one-sided, but then when they were ready to talk, that's why you have four agreements up there.
Okay.
So what they were ready to do is have a modest raise on a yearly basis, the one that we feel is deserved, well-deserved. But at the same time, yes, it is putting money in their pocket, but at the same time, if you were to calculate, if we didn't do anything, and just stayed with all those contracts, and the amount of insurance money that it would have cost us, we're actually saving quite a bit of money, almost $400,000 really, if you look at it over that timeframe.
And you have offered them a different insurance plan.
Right, yeah, so the insurance plan is really an insurance plan that's kind of similar to those that are out there right now in the private sector. You guys, everybody's seen in the private sector, their insurance has kind of changed, and it's kind of pay-as-you-go type of insurance, but at the same time, it's not going to bust our wallets when we, when we actually go out there and start to, you know, provide that insurance farther. It's not the Cadillac of all the insurances, and that's what we were trying to stay away from, the Cadillac tax and all of that stuff.
They have, I believe, a health savings account?
Yeah, so the health savings account, right. And so, as they, as they continue to contribute to that, there are pieces of the elements of the contract, and I know the people that's out there right now that I don't want to...
It's a lot of detail, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of these, but it's pieces of the contract, really, that show them and explain to them how they're going to benefit from going into the health savings, and how they can contribute to their own insurance, insurance costs, and where the town is kicking in that, so as the town...
So they can manage this to help themselves with their income as well.
Right, because a lot of times, a lot of times, people say, "Oh, you know, I'm just going to go to the emergency room."
Yeah.
And we end up paying for that, and the rates that, when the taxes go up. So this is really, okay, if I go to the emergency room, I'm going to have to pay this, but if I go and, you know, if it's not really an emergency, and I get a doctor's appointment, I'm going to pay a little bit less. So it's all about being responsible, and that responsibility actually pays off for both the taxpayer and for the employees that deserve that insurance.
That is good.
So it's a win-win situation, really.
Yeah.
And I was really proud of our town manager and our town attorney, you know, after getting the direction from the council of what we want to accomplish, they came back with four of them. So, look at, you know...
I'm proud of those unions for being reasonable.
Yeah, and they were, and so, and it was good. But, you know, look at, we again, for, you know, if everything is voted in on the tax rate, on the articles right now, we're going to go over, and it's going to be the first increase in four years. But, people say, "Well..."
That's if every warrant article passes.
If every warrant article passes.
Right.
But we provided, the council provided a solid budget, which would not raise your taxes, and in fact, is $30,000 under.
Right, yeah.
A default.
The default, right.
So, so, again, we're trying to say, "We're doing this because we want to keep the tax rate down. I'm a protector of the tax rate, I'm protector of your wallet, that's what I do. But I will never do that, never ever..."
Do you have a cape?
No, no, no. But I feel like that sometimes, you've got to kind of get up there and go, "Hey," you know, and stand up there and say, "Look, we can't be pulling, pulling money out of people's wallets when they don't have it."
If you're going to do that, I want it on my show.
And so, thank you. But, but, you know, the thing is, is that if, if we continue to, you know, push this envelope and keep spending, keep spending, keep spending, and not really have a good balance, I think, I have a quote written down here from, from Kevin, you know, he said, "Balanced approach." And I agree, it's a balanced approach to these things, you know? But, yeah, I mean, it's just, I think it's just, the momentum and the, the momentum that we've had actually in the council has been able to bring this to that $30,000 under default, and has been able to bring us the fact that we feel we can run the town at that rate, and at that level, without increasing the taxes. Now, there's some other things, like I said, à la carte, I said that at the deliberative session, but, yeah, it's, it's, it's just all about...
But if we vote for the contracts...
Yep.
We are essentially saving money going forward.
Right, so it's, so in other words, if we were to...
So even though we're going to raise the tax rate by...
The rate temporarily, it would have actually went up higher.
Okay, okay.
If we didn't do anything, so that's the important note, so definitely.
All right, okay.
I definitely understand, yeah.
Okay. So, what other things are going on right now that you think we should be paying attention to, that, or that you want to put your cape on, and watch out for us for?
You know, I think, I think some of the things, just to kind of, kind of move it in the direction, I think that, you know, the town, again, has a lot of things that are coming out. It's constantly, the amount of people that come in, we have to balance that one.
A lot of new residents.
We have a lot of new residents that are coming in, so there's going to be a lot more services that are needed. And again, that's why I constantly repeat myself by saying, "We have to balance that." We have to understand that we can, got to continue to focus in on the growth that we can possibly manage up at the, at the north part of Pettingill Road, and continue to have that vision, and look at, it's working. So why recreate the whale? If we've already developed something that's working, stay on it. We understand that, you know, as, as Woodmont continues to develop, that there's a developer's agreement, so as they, as they continue to develop, if there's any issue where the tax rate is going to go up, they actually have to kick in.
Because of them.
Because of them.
Okay.
They actually have to kick in. So, if, say, for instance, the population that grows, grows in that area, needs more police or more fire, they actually have to, you know, develop that and provide it.
Provide that.
So, again, another development that we've, we've had, so, you know, I've got, I've got a list of the few things that I wanted to mention real quick that...
Okay, yeah, go ahead, you've got, we've got a few more minutes here.
Yeah, thank you, you know, and I just want people to understand, when we hired a new town manager, you know, the tax rate, and I wrote a few things down, just because I want to make sure people understood.
Go right ahead, yeah.
You know, the tax decreased to 42 cents since 2013, the first time in Londonderry in three years, three consecutive years, the first time since, I think, 2007, 2007. We've provided tax relief for our citizens over those, those years. I've stood up against this tax credit with the veterans, this question about which veteran should have it, which shouldn't, they all should.
That's, yeah.
We've got to figure it out, you know what I mean? These guys go to war, they go to represent us, so that we can stay...
And does it even actually impact us that much?
Yeah, I mean, so that we can stay home and be safe.
Yeah.
And we're not going to take care of those guys? We have to, that's our, that's our duty. So, you know, the union negotiations we talked about, the senior housing on Sanborn, you know, the fact that we had, you know, just had...
That's sat for a long time.
Yeah, it's sat for a long time, and it really, nothing really was done with it. And we finally have the state working together with a contractor to move that forward. You know, again, talking about the Grand Estates, the first luxury senior center, senior housing.
The Grand Estates?
Grand Estates over there in 102, that's a luxury, a luxury seniors area. And then the All-American Living, which is right next to that, that's the first assisted living.
Yes, yeah.
You know, when I talk about-
It's quite a development there.
When I talk about knowing who you are in the population, we are, I think I have my finger, as a councilor, on that. And I'm pushing to make sure that we go in the right direction and take care of those folks that really need to be, need to be helped. I mean, you know, need to be looked at. You know, like I said, the long overdue major senior center renovation, that's been, you know, a long time coming. The transportation, I already, I already talked about earlier. Just giving back to, you know, just trying to give back to the folks that made major contributions in this town and really created the fabric of the community. You know, that's, that's really what it's about. You know, the reorganization plan of the, you know, when the planning department and Colleen coming out as the town planner, and us talking about, now that we have this growth in town, and really having Kevin working on, you know, that selling of Londonderry in a good way, in a positive way, the economic development. Having Lisa now as the assistant town manager, the idea of having an assistant town manager really work on the operational side of it.
Yeah.
Those are some successes, I think, that the council's really worked on. A very successful presidential election, everybody thought it was going to be horrendous, and, you know-
Oh, the parking and the driving and the voting was easy.